Good evening. Ben, for those folks that are online, can you remind them how they can participate with us?
Absolutely. Planning Commission runs an inclusive meeting. We generally open things up for comments. We do ask for comments to be limited to three minutes. And before you speak, make sure that you get the attention of our chair and state your name to be acknowledged in the minutes. For those online, there is a hand function under the reactions button. And or raise hands function that will inform us that you want to speak and we'll be able to allow you to unmute. We don't have anybody that's on the phone that needs those instructions right now. While they do allow a lot of public comments, they are prepared for disruptions and will ask for disruptive individuals to leave if necessary. And persistent disruptions in the meeting may result in the meeting being recessed and continued at a later date.
Thank you, Ben. We have our public comment period for those items that are on the agenda. There anything you want to share with us today?
Sure, thank you. I think I've already shared that the Grange, I'm the Grange president here for Stevenson Grange number 121. We have our cider pressing on Sunday from two to four at St. Claude Park mile post 29. Before Smith Cart Road going west here on 14. And I just wanted to let you know that the Wind River Nursery Trust is having, or whatever they're called. Up there, I'm not involved with them, but we had a meeting and they're having a native plant sale on October 4th in Stabler at 12 to 6. They're growing native plants up there. So that's just basic community news. The other thing is, I hope that our city does something about the daimn curbs that we have in town. Some of them are very high and some of them keep getting run into. Like that one down by the Chevron Station, because that one on the right side, nobody has not missed it. And it's been put back and cemented. And I don't know why it's not made like the one on the other side, which is flat. So in case you do tend to hit your, with your making a right turn, you can not hit it. I don't know why they're not similar. And the one by the Grange where those curves are, they come into the sidewalk and they're like 90 degrees. And sharp and not very friendly to your feet. So you know, some of those things and the curbs on the west side of the courthouse, they're this high. Now, that was supposed to be taken care of when Russell Street was being redone. And I don't know where Russell Street is, but those kinds of things make your community walkable and safer. That is a long step down on that side, on the west side of the courthouse. So just, just a few things and I want to thank Ben for some of the articles that he's had in in the minutes and that I have actually looked at them. Thank you, Ben. I appreciate that to learn more about housing and that. So nothing, nothing else, but I do hope that this year we do have some discussion about housing affordability. And how to achieve it without waiting for the market.
Certainly. Certainly.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody online who would like to make any comments at this point? I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand. Let's move on to the approval of our minutes for the August 11 meeting. Folks had a chance to look those over?
Yeah, I had one question about them. I wasn't here for that meeting. And on the back page, Ben and Charlie Hales started an input survey. Is there a committee formed? About the vacation rentals yet?
One was formed at the very end of that meeting that was Charlie and Tony and I to get together to talk about some of the next.
Okay, but this was during the meeting. So you guys had already met about it? I was just trying to figure out where all this came in. I'd love to be a part of that. That's why I'm asking.
You can.
Thank you.
Because it's a third member and at the, at the previous meeting. You had assigned Charlie to help with the.
Okay, so that's what that was about. I just couldn't figure out. So if you'd include me in committee stuff, I'd appreciate it. But if you don't want me there.
We can only have two without it being, without.
Oh, then you're.
You can receive the information.
May I receive the information, please?
I got hammered down, so everybody else.
No, that's great. I'll gladly just receive the information. That would be great.
And I think as, as we'll discuss, when we get to that topic too, we'll be moving on in terms of what we want to put out for sort of a public discussion draft.
Correct.
And so I'm not so sure that, I think the committee was just to help us put together those initial thoughts in terms of what we would have in that discussion draft.
Yeah.
Something out there where we can get some public input because at that last meeting, we, what we had, three or four maybe at the most? And so we thought if there was something that folks could react to, you know, we might get a little more participation.
Good, good.
That's what we are.
Thank you.
I would make a motion to approve the man.
Have a motion to approve?
I will gladly second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. opposed? Bases. Thank you. Okay. Ben, we're on to new business zoning interpretation. We have two.
We have two. The first one is the staff report for that starts on overall page six of the packets. The planning commission and city council do their best to anticipate everything that could happen in the future and plan in a regulatory sense for where things have, should be allowed. They can't predict everything and we acknowledge that. And when there is a use that isn't identified in the zoning code or in the zone, then there's an interpretation process that guides how you go about allowing uses or evaluating uses where you just didn't anticipate it before. One of those uses that is listed in the zoning code is public, private or parochial school. You've anticipated that that can be allowed in the ED education district. But the PR, public use and recreation district is silent for this use. And so it's being brought to you for consideration in that district. When you conduct your interpretations, there are approval standards that you need to go through, or criteria that you need to go through. The outcome of an interpretation could be that the use is prohibited. You go through and say that it doesn't meet the, it doesn't align with the intent, the purpose of the zoning district. That it's not listed in less restrictive districts or that it's not of the same general character. In that case, it would be appropriate to prohibit that use in that zone. If you are able to make affirmative findings on the first one and either of the second two, the first one being that it's aligns with the purpose of the zoning district. That needs, you know, affirmative finding there. And then either of the following two affirmative findings that it's the use is expressly allowed in a less restrictive district. Or that the use is of the same general character as the principal and commissioner uses authorized. You could also permit the type of use to be authorized by the zoning administrator as an accessory use. If that use is so common, commonly associated incidental with some of the allowed uses in that district. So it's a process to go through and we'll, we'll do this twice tonight. For both of them, have two draft interpretations for the currents. The first one up for consideration, it's that is, would a school have been allowed in the PR, public use or recreation district? How many considered it when, when we first adopted that? So the public use or recreation district is the district right in the center of town on Rock Cove, where the fairgrounds are. Where the city sewer plant is, where the Lions building is in the parking area associated with the fairgrounds. And some of the, and county public works facilities are in that district. The purpose, while the use is described here, as it's listed in our land use descriptions of public school or public, private or parochial school, the purpose of the district is listed here. The guidance I have for you is that there's nothing to prevent you from making an affirmative finding on that if you would choose to. Moving into the, the next two criteria where either one could be true for whether the use is expressly allowed in a less restrictive district. It is, this use is expressly allowed in the ED education district. So an affirmative finding is appropriate for that one. And then if you wanted to do an analysis under three, it's under of the same general character as other principal uses in the district. You can, but since two is, it's broken to make that affirmative finding, you need not do any analysis there. I think the, the one to really look closely at is whether or not the public, private or parochial school use serves a purpose customarily incidental to the instant principal use, uses of that zone. So as I described, those instant principal uses currently are campgrounds, utility and communication facilities, county fairgrounds, government administration building, community service building. And so the guidance that I give you there is that I'm, I'm hard pressed, staff is hard pressed to, to recommend making a firm finding related to that, that schools in my judgment are not so commonly associated with those to, to say that's true. But you certainly can, can do that. The interpretations available to you. The first one is stating that it is something that you would have conditionally allowed or that should be conditionally allowed to, or allowed to apply for a conditional use permit and to process that way. The draft interpretation B is that it's maybe allowed by the zoning administrator as an accessory use, should you wish to make that. Judgment, we do have a person here, a stakeholder in this discussion. Cheryl is here. She's working with the county to potentially rent space there for school facilities. So if you have questions on it, she'd be available.
And the county is considering renting that space. In other words, that's a use they would, they would rent that for.
The county is the one that submitted the request for this interpretation.
Okay, correct. All right. Thanks, Ben. Questions?
My question, no building, buildings, it's all renting the county, the buildings from the county?
Correct.
Okay.
These are the all specifically, yeah.
So how much of the facility on there would you use in this process?
How much of the facility will you use? The whole left-hand side, which is air conditioned, the bathrooms. And then depending on the weather, the inside area might be used for recess of some sort. I'm going to try to get them out just about every day, but I'm sure there will be times in which it wouldn't make any sense to be out of there.
That's certainly.
How many students are you looking at?
So I can have 10 to 15 with just myself. And then I would have to hire a second person because 15 to one is the state limit. I would like for the very first year to have 10, 15 possibly, and then grow gradually. Yes.
Right.
Can I ask why you didn't approach the one with the school?
Well, I did. I did that in February, March and was turned down completely. They wouldn't even meet with me to hear what I wanted to do. So no, no chance of using any public school grounds.
Well, that's too bad.
Yeah, it would have been perfect.
Yeah. A school in a school.
What a concept.
Yeah. Thoughts, folks, on this?
To start attending the school board meetings.
Might thought, sorry, this is a fairly specific ask for an existing building. But this is set a protocol that would allow undeveloped recreational areas to be built as a school, which I don't think was the intention when we said recreational areas aside. So is this a?
Well, this is an interpretation within the PR district. Right, Ben?
Correct.
And so it would be confined to that district, right?
It would be confined to that district. The draft interpretation here is fairly broad. And so the draft interpretation is saying that a school could be an accessory use. Is this the question? Is an accessory?
What I'm saying is like, right now it's an existing building making use of what's already there. Let's say they have the opportunity and someone says, hey, I want to build a school on the corner of the fairgrounds where all the geese hang out and across everybody. And we've already kind of rubber stamped that. I think that not the intention that the public recreation area had. I mean, we're making use of an existing structure. I mean, we're making use of an existing structure. So I'm in favor of that as. Like a uh. Conditioned use. That's a possibility, but not a guaranteed by right. Because it's a recreation district. And so you're, you know, inviting uh. Someone to take advantage of that. When you're setting it aside as. A public recreation area.
I agree. That's why I asked whether the buildings built are using an existing building, because. Great idea on paper. It sounds great, but August always comes up with the what happens when, and that's a really good point.
So you're looking at interpretation A, Ben?
I'm not looking at any. I'm looking.
Well, is that, do you think that's what fits within?
I think it's very easy to justify interpretation A. Um. Interpretation B feels like a stretch to um to consider a school. Uh a customarily incidental uh accessory use to a fairgrounds or a public works facility.
Is there a limitation we could put on it so August's concern would be taken care of?
A provides the the door into that limitation.
Okay.
Changes to B, changes to the draft interpretation of B. Um could be limited more. Um right now, that's a fairly wide-open interpretation that uh could be accessory to any of those uses. Uh there could be some limitations um that are placed on that. Um.
Well, Ben, your your memo says that, you know, the planning commission could review and approve via a conditional use. But neither one of these is written in that context, or would you view A as being a condition?
A would open the door for the application. Um so the interpretation process is a two-step process. First step is, hey, you didn't think about this use when you were establishing districts. What do you think now that you're thinking about it? And then if you were to adopt A, um then it would open the door for that application, the conditional use permit application.
I would say that as a conditional use, it would have to be predicated by the fact that it was making use of existing structure. And that you couldn't build a new structure with the intent of having a private school. In it on public recreation now.
At least not, not under what we're approving here tonight. I mean, someone could always make that request. At some point in time.
I just don't want to like, you know.
Open the door.
Open the door a little bit and then suddenly like, whoa, you guys said that. This was a possibility. And then again, it goes back to what was the original intent of the recreational district. For public use and as a private school. Really a public use.
Well, and.
Some public benefit from it, but is it still with the same intent that the district was zoned in?
And what are your plans when there are? The fall bazaar and there's, you know, all the things that happen in the exhibit hall. What are your plans then?
So he has me having all of my stuff in uh boxes that have wheels on them and they stack. So I can roll in and roll out.
Okay, okay. So that's already planned.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And I've gone through the summers as well.
Yeah, which is what it's.
Let's see, if we had the Grange Building, safety range. You you could maybe have a school there. Where is that?
Do you know where the county buildings are, where the parking is?
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, that big white building.
Big white building. Yeah, it's on the corner.
Yeah, there's a group forum to save it. Four thousand square feet.
Okay. There's a lot of uh requirements that need to be upheld to be able to have kids in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're better off than that. That's why the elementary school would be just like.
I agree.
It would.
That's, that was my original intent.
And not and not Carson, because they're gonna push those kids uh down here for the from the Wind River Middle School, aren't they? They're going back to the high school.
High school.
They are.
Yeah.
So there must be room up there.
I really don't have any interest in living or working in Carson. Um I want this through my home and I want my business to be near my home. Simple as that.
Yep.
Yeah.
So my sense is, is we're generally okay with this use. Provided that we're utilizing an existing facility.
Having it as a conditional use. With the criteria of. No new. Structure. Can be built for the purpose of this. But still, there's there's ways that people can get around that.
There's no interest.
No, I I know, and it's not about.
It's down the road. Yeah, down the road. Yeah.
This is straying close to that line that I like to try to avoid where we're getting somewhat into. The potential review of an application that would come to you in the future. And so that the conversation about um. Uh ex parte communications or um. Uh fairness and decision-making. Strays close to that line, but a a a condition such as that could be placed on any condition you permit uh that is brought to you. No new construction was allowed as a result of this permit.
So basically, what we're saying is. This, if if we approve this, this would set. The open the opportunity for a condition used to permit to come in, and we would see that conditional use permit. And approve that.
Well, I think opening in that door, we should also. Put that doorstop in that says. Having opened it this much, we're only willing to open it so much. And so that when the next application comes in for a conditional use. We're like, well, how come you let this person do it and you won't let me? And is that? What is the, what is the rationale for that? You say, well. When we redo this, this was the rationale. And so we're following our own criteria that we set at that time. So I would say, let's set that criteria now. Rather than later.
Yeah, and as a member of the public, I I don't want the public to lose out on public recreational space in our communities. Uh we we don't have enough public spaces as there is, and uh. Uh I would hate to, so boundaries, I think, are good. I. I applaud any educational efforts. So I know we don't have a lot. Well, we have, we have buildings, but apparently they're not being used. Uh for that purpose. I think your school will grow and you're gonna have to do something else later on, but I don't want the. Public to lose out anything uh by opening that door.
Yeah, the long-term goal that I have is to have many of these centers up and down the gorge. Because it seems like there is a need, because everybody is so sparsely. Up and down the gorge itself to have little satellite centers. Right? So that we don't need more than twenty-five kids at that particular grounds. Then we can go and. I don't know. I was thinking uh White Salmon in the river. Um somebody's doing something with the Prindle School. That was.
Are they? I saw.
Hmm, yes.
I saw the roof going on steps. I figured it was purchased.
Yeah, that was one of the places that I looked at.
That would be cool.
It would be cool.
Yeah.
But there it's covered in mold and and the uh. Historical society gets to take it over to get the mold under there, but whatever.
Yeah.
So August, how would you modify this? Option A. Do you address your concern? Or do we just make this a statement on the record? And when that conditional use permit comes in. We we very clearly say, yes, that's acceptable in this district. As a conditional use in an existing structure. And once you make that decision on that first conditional use, that certainly sends the message, I think, out for future folks.
Yeah. But that would, I think, serve the purpose if. I say, I just don't want to have it open something that then in three years we go. That one slipped, that one slipped in that wasn't, because like Mary said, I mean. Let's say it was a piece of property that's an open park. And suddenly the county says, well, we're we're gonna build a, you know, uh recreational. Building there. And then it turns out that. You know, uh they rent it out and now you've got a school. In competition with the public park use that it originally was, and that's. You know, uh I think. We need to preserve our public interest.
Mm-hmm.
As much as we can.
There are some additional protections um there, not everywhere on the sites in this district, but. Uh because it's centered along Rock Creek and Rock Cove. Uh you have an additional layer of use-based regulations um for areas within two hundred feet of those watered-down ghettas.
Yeah.
Um a school, uh institutional uses um are not preferred um in that district. I don't know exactly uh what they're. What they're listed as. Um they certainly aren't preferred there, and so we've got that. But there are still, that's still used recreational areas uh elsewhere.
Any further thoughts? Turn motion?
You motion. You have all the big words tonight.
The little words. Uh I would motion to amend with and. With this being a conditional. Also making the statement that. We believe it's a an appropriate conditional use. Because there's already a building there. The facilities that can be used, and it's not. Detracting from the public use. And then it's significant.
Could we include that in the findings, Ben?
Uh we could, we could put that in the findings. So add a fourth finding that um. The use is. Considered not proposed.
Say the use, you know, the use will be within an existing. Will make effective use of an existing structure or something like that.
That sounds good.
Yeah. And will not detract.
And will not detract from public use. That's very important.
No hand from our minute ticker on that yet. I think that's a good sign.
You get something there, Ben?
All right, I'll put this out there. So the use will adaptively reuse an existing building without detracting from public uses.
That detracting or interfering with public uses? Yeah. Does that sound?
That sounds, that sounds appropriate.
Was that your motion?
That was my motion, yeah.
I second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay, motion carries. Thank you, Chair. Good luck.
Thank you.
Now the rest of the business.
Yes, I get that. Thank you all very much.
Nice to meet you.
And should I go? So you can finish.
You need not stay.
We won't change our mind when you leave.
Have a good night.
Okay, Ben, we've got. Another zoning interpretation?
Another zoning interpretation, so I will um be shorter on the criteria and discussion that um is required of this. Uh the repo with this one is that um there are two ways to approach this, or two draft ways to approach this also. Uh the interpretation request was for a um. Uh private structure to be used as a sauna. Uh which in doing analysis under the uses of the code, I would classify that as a personal service. Uh you have a description for what personal services are, and you uh define where those are allowed. Uh. You have two different categories of personal services in the code currently. You have um recreational services. This is something like tours um that are led uh or lessons um, and then you have salons. This sauna use um doesn't fit neatly in any of those, so that one that does fit neatly in is that broad personal service use. As um this request is in the city's R-one single-family residential district. That's your most restrictive district, and so I didn't think it was appropriate to just give you the one option to say. Open up that district to all personal services users. Um so have a working description here of day spa that would cover this use, but still have a a little bit tighter control of it. Over um how that, what types of uses you would be opening up that district to. Working uh descriptions can be changed. Certainly are subject to rear-review and change before um enshrining it as a zoning code amendment, um but there is a, there is that description in there.
So this would require a zoning code amendment? In order to officially have this definition?
It does not require it. So um the um I skipped over the end of the uh interpretation process, so. In the, after you go through and make uh the interpretations, the zoning administrator needs to keep a log of those. So that they can be efficiently incorporated into future zoning code amendments. And so as we, as we go through and make changes, we always bring forward those for reconsideration to enshrine it.
Mm-hmm.
For everyone. So the next time we're doing a zoning code amendments uh based on the decision made tonight. There will be a proposal to add um a C for public, private, parochial school in the PR district, because you've made that decision on top. Um and moving forward, uh other property owners would have um a similar ability without having to come for interpretation. Same with this, um depending on the decision that's made here, um the two options that are presented are that um. Any property owner uh could uh come forward with a conditional use proposal for a broad personal services use for a more narrow uh day spa. Uh use, and it it's more narrow, but it also covers several of the other things that. It does seem like our community um is interested in or doing, so um massage um. Other types of hydrotherapy or relaxation. Uh involved there. Um sauna is what drove this, but opening up a little bit without uh opening up the door. Uh entirely. The um A in this case is you would open it up um broadly, and B is you would open it up narrowly to to this day spa. If you um decide that you can go through and make those judgments uh in the R-three zone. And so those judgments again are. Uh that the um use is consistent with the purpose of the district. Uh you've got the working description of the use. The purpose of the R-one district is um. To provide minimum development standards for residential uses where complete community services are available and where residents are separated from uses. Characteristic of uh more urban or rural areas, so. I don't see anything standing in the way of you making an affirmative finding there, but I certainly wouldn't disagree with you if you thought that the um uh day spa. Uh or personal service uses should be avoided in those areas.
So this is on a residential lot that has a home?
Same caution about um diving in too much to specific um properties, because it opens it up on a district-wide basis. Um the um thought for this one is, no, it would not be an accessory use um.
Okay.
Or there's no. Or there's no uh on that, so uh vacant property.
I get a little nervous about. About this, and I mean. Because I, I think even though this activity, it can vary in its scale. And you know, if you've got one massage therapist and someone comes to their house and, you know, and. Has, has a massage and leaves, that's, that's pretty minor, I mean, that doesn't detract, I don't think, from the character of the residential neighborhood. But if all of a sudden you've had a full massage parlor there with several technicians and. Array of things, you have more traffic, you know, I, I, I don't think I can say that it's inherently. That, that, that use is inherently acceptable. Within the R one district. Could it be acceptable as a conditional use? Yeah, possibly.
So what did the RCW say about cottage industries?
In the first scenario that uh Chairman Breckford mentioned, that if it's somebody using a portion of their home uh to conduct this business. We would review that as a home occupation and um approve that, this would be where there's no. Home uh to have a home occupation associated with the cottage industry, um very similar to home occupation.
Cause he's, he's talking about doing this away from his home and being open to multiple um. People being able to rent this uh sauna out. And, and I'm not sure, I, I can't picture it because I have done saunas, I actually did one for my fiftieth all my reunion this year. And um. I, I just can't imagine it being out there somewhere and having people come and he says up to six people. At a time being able to go, so what if there's six individuals and six cars? What happens?
That would be part of site specific analysis that we'd request information on during a conditional use permit review and judgments could be made if. If the door is open to it at all. So there can be um those conditional use uh permit reviews, of course, you can attach conditions to them. Um making them conditioned and you could uh require a certain amount of parking um be available. You could require any number of things that you can justify to ensure that the use, once it's in place, will. Maintain harmony with the area it's located, not um. Will be in conformity with the comp plan and other city adopted plans will. Uh not substantially reduce the value of adjoining and abutting property and. I'm blanking too.
Should we learn the character of the R one district?
Which is the most restricted res- residential district.
That's what I uh.
That case by case. And if there was something that uh was, if there was a proposal that was out of character, it could be denied or conditioned um.
So if this, if this sauna were in. A, a person's house, a residence, an ADU even. We would look at that as a home occupation. But since this would open it up to a dedicated structure or improvement for these particular.
In our one district.
In the R one district.
Are you guys ready for my opinion?
Yes, I agree.
So the single family residential district. Is traditionally always been a residential and I think what this is asking is to put a business. In a residential area. As, you know. Not as an accessory use, but as a primary use. That's, that's a commercial zoning or a business residential zoning, which doesn't apply to the single family. So I, I would, I would move heavily in favor with Jeff's interpretation if it was. A single person doing it in their home as part of the home or. As an accessory building or something like that. Then, yeah, that would be a conditional use and we would set our parameters for. How many people can be in there at one time, how they're gonna deal with the parking. To preserve that. Feeling of a single family residential neighborhood. Uh I think. A dedicated structure for a business. Is, you know, kind of too far of a leap from a single family residential district.
I agree.
Why do you make a motion?
So what I would offer is using our interpretation as a template where we go down and there are uh A um in. Uh interpretation A is a template, uh where there are findings, I would uh. Remove the final three findings and if the first one um say that personal services use. Is inconsistent with the uh purpose of the R one district and no further analysis is necessary. Then in the interpretation itself. There's a question to be made um or to be asked about whether it's uh personal services day spa. Uh or whether you're only closing into the day spa use or whether you're closing to all those um personal service uses.
I would say anything beyond something that's in the current consideration of the home occupation. And that's a conditional use. Is a business and that's not an appropriate thing to have in a single family residential zone. So if it's a, a tax service that has. Eight tax people working in it, eh, that's, that's not a home based service.
Home occupation, you know, accounting firm.
Right, i- if there's employees that are there, that's not a home occupation anymore.
Altering finding number one to. The personal service use is inconsistent with the purpose of the R one single family residential district and no further analysis is necessary. Uh deleting binades two, three and four and then changing interpretation in the R one single family residential district. The personal services use does not satisfy the criteria of. S M C um seventeen twelve zero two zero C one, as a result, the use uh is prohibited. In the district.
I would motion to.
Is prohibitor just not allowed, Ben?
Neither ends up being prohibited. Then some events of the code, which I didn't include on, no. Staff report.
Okay.
I would motion to uh. Is that an amendment or, or are we, that's just an opinion?
Let's adopt as amended.
Okay, well, adopt as amended.
You have a motion?
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those say nay, motion carries.
If the sauna was attached to the homes, would that make a difference?
Good.
Like he said, you know, in an ADU and it's part of a home based business versus a business in a R one district.
Again, Mary, I, I think it's, it's trying to find that line where something is compatible. With that residential district. If an individual, you know, conducting some low intensity occupation within their home, that's one thing. But if it gets into that gray area, where we have a dedicated facility and multiple employees on a site. Uh that's something else, I think.
It's part of the business.
Okay, Ben?
Uh question from our minute taker first.
Are we good? I would just like some clarity on that final motion, that last motion.
Okay, it was to um. Adopt a um interpretation A as amended.
That would help clarify, yes, but other than that, that's how it here in minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Moving to overall page twenty of your packet, this is the follow up for the discussion we had last meeting about um vacation rentals. Um at the last meeting, um we addressed uh the data gaps that we have and the data needs that we have. And we addressed um in general what uh the next iteration of our vacation rental um policy should achieve. Or should attempt to achieve, uh there was a subcommittee, ad hoc subcommittee that was formed of Commissioner Hales and Commissioner. Lawson, uh we met on that, you have the report, the notes of that meeting um. And you had me discussing it because I'm the only one standing uh for you at this meeting, so um broadly, there was some um. Acknowledgement that the details involved in uh vacation rental licensing. Uh program for the city are outside of the pure land use zoning um. Issues that you all are appointed to do and so acknowledging that uh they want. Uh the recommendation was to take this as a um, a little bit different approach, so uh the planning commission would review. What um should be achieved by functioning vacation rental uh licensing program. A list of the potential tools to incorporate into that program to achieve those purposes. Put that to the city council to see if they agree with that or wanted to modify anything right up, right off the bat. And so it's a cautious approach, um and it's exercising caution because this uh is not core planning. Um the. The notes are there, the staff report uh is here and it puts some words to, the staff report puts some words to the po- policy rationale. Um so at the last meeting, we listed out all of the pos- policy rationales that the current uh system were based on. How many of those policy rationales still run true today? Um what does run true today and so there's some changes that are in here, the public purposes to be achieved here. Uh that weren't included um the last time around or just some modifications to that, so the um. Preserve ha- housing availability was one that really uh came up uh to the top as that's something that the community is concerned about now. In a way that they weren't um nine years ago. Uh maintaining neighborhood character uh was an alter uh, a twist um the last time or last time was more. Uh about um. Uh preventing proliferation and um avoiding neighborhood disruptions and so this one is a, an umbrella over both of those. That uh we're maintaining the character um by avoiding the disruptions that occur from uh vacation rentals that are both occupied. Um by members of the community that are temporary members of the community and by vacation rentals when they're vacant and uh the impact that that has. Uh ensure market fairness and taxation is one that uh remained, protecting guests is one that remained, but was a little bit less important. Uh to the group this time around, reducing administrative burdens remained to ensure that the system can be augmented by the staff at City Hall. Uh once it's in place. An alteration here is provide effective barriers to e- to entry, um last time it said, I believe. Uh reduce barriers to entry and so ensuring that the barriers that exist through this program are effective um. And benefiting the, the economy was one that survived too, uh though um reduced in importance, so. There are words there um describing what those um public purposes are, the policy rationale. And then there are different tools um for consideration, uh you've got a listing of those tools, um that was uh done real well. By Commissioner Hales uh in that committee, it's listed here um with an assessment of which of those public uh purposes. Would be achieved uh by the different tools, so. Uh many of those are what we currently have in place, uh though they could be changed, the specifics of the tool could and, and very likely should be changed. Uh to make sure that it's implemented and um. It's both implemented consistently and um the uh compliance with it is embraced by the. Um the marketplace. Uh new interventions to consider there are uh recommended to us both by. Uh the group that initiated this as a discussion um from the city council and, and then was therefore sent to you, so. Proof of residency, that's um. Uh one that came up at the last meeting also is something to, to look at and the. Uh subcommittee uh was interested in that, subcommittee was also interested in uh two different types of caps. Uh one would be an overall numerical cap on the number of vacation rental homes we have in our community. Uh and then one license per um one unit per licensee, so a cap on what any individual could have. Um different license caps to, to consider. Uh the onsite ownership preference, the district specific allowances, uh different ways to enforce this. Uh penalty just shutting off the water uh for a unit, so it can't be occupied. And then opening up the door for inspections um. Uh was something we talked about a lot the last time, where we currently require a staff inspection of the unit to ensure. Um the guests are protected, that it's substantially in conformance with the um fire code and um building codes that apply. Uh this would open that up to um private inspection, so there is some economic churn that occurs um based on this. It's not uh a duty that's automatically gonna fall to the um, the city uh and our inspection staff. Uh the data gaps that you did have, that you wanted information on were the trends in vacation rental licensing, you were able to pull those together. And then in twenty twenty five, we're able to tease out additional information from those, so. Uh twenty seventeen through twenty four is the information that was available was those that were fully licensed through the city system. And that's um went up and down from four to fifteen. Uh and then in twenty twenty five, you have two different categories, those that are fully licensed through the city's um regulatory uh system. And those that are partially uh licensed because they've gone through um uh the state component of the lic- licensing. And that brings the total up to twenty three uh of the homes that. Um in the city are being used for this purpose.
That you know of.
That we know of, the methodology to um evaluate, to, to put this together was to. Go to our uh log, our um, our registry. That identified the green set, the nine on the green set. The receipts that we have, uh the state's log, uh that got us up to twenty three. We also explored the major um sites where people advertise, so the R B O, uh Airbnb, Bay Casa. Uh and a, a, a couple of others to determine whether anything was missed. We found that there weren't, I, we, we set this uh chart up to anticipating that there would be a healthy number of those. But we investigated that, so um twenty three of the homes, uh when you put that in context with the approximately eight hundred um dwelling units that we have here. That's about two, two and a half percent. And so uh the uh discussion by the ad hoc subcommittee was uh. A cap of around five percent, which was um something that we've seen in a lot of other communities. Uh that would allow for a doubling, essential doubling of the number of units we have if we just went wrong with that. Uh, that would allow for a doubling, essential doubling of the number of units we have if we just went wrong with that other community cap. But that's the, the details on that are what we would hope to tease out in the next phases of the public involving process. If the city council opens up the door to, to any of those when they review them.
This brings up some of the principles we talked about in these last zoning interpretations, you know? How do you maintain the integrity of your residential districts? And uh, you know, I know folks are concerned, you know, when we heard from the public, when they, you know, we had several folks come and see us. They are concerned about, about this. I mean, it is, it is a commercial endeavor. Um, we had one person tell us that they were actually getting calls from, you know, out of state, you know? Folks that wanted to buy houses here and operate them as uh, as vacation rentals. Uh, you know, that's. That's a business and I think, and I think even here, even if you, if you just limited it to, you know, a resident of the town, if they had separated these things. That's a commercial venture, I mean, that's. We have land set aside for commercial. Um, you know, lodging. And so. Um, when I looked over these, I thought it seemed like, you know, a pretty reasonable, you know, starting point for our conversation. Uh, in terms of. Limiting the number. Having, you know, a local resident, having one license per resident.
But then you're into forming a corporation for each individual home. I mean, there's ways around that. If a corporation is running the vacation rental, if I, if I decide I'm gonna rent my home out and list it as a corporation and then I buy my neighbor's house. You can form a second corporation, so I don't know how you get around that.
Communities try um to, to define. Things that way. And so involvement in one corporation by one individual would.
Okay, see, I didn't know if you could get that technical.
There's, there's more text that needs to go into the co amendment, but.
Right.
There's.
Okay, but then also in part gets picked up by having that overall cap too.
Yes.
Not allowing facing stuff. That's interesting that it's about two and a half percent of our existing housing stock.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, that's, that is good information to have.
Well, and the letter that the planning commission received um about a neighbor who has a next door home that's a vacation rental and the issues that they've had.
Yeah.
Did y'all read that? That, how can we, I don't know if this is even something you can do. If you have a home twenty feet from you, you can't be a vacation rental? I don't know if that's something, so you're not disrupting the neighbors, does that make sense? I don't know how to word that correctly.
But you know, I, I struggle a little bit with that. I mean, because you could have someone who's living right next door to you.
Who's condos do it. Yeah, condos do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Mm-mm, but you could have a neighbor that is just throws wild parties all the time and he lives there, you know?
That's true.
So you have that same level of disruption. I mean, where do you draw the line in terms of, you know, of a disturbance that you would ask law enforcement to step in on?
Yes, that's true.
When it's a nuisance.
Mary.
Um, well, I, in the first part of this um handout, and it's, it says in the minutes that uh eleven uh, uh. Vacation homes paid all fees and twenty-seven have not paid fees in the minutes. So.
That, that was just, that was me, that was going through different things and trying to put it all together without really understanding where to go and get the information from.
Okay, so that, that's not correct?
That's not correct.
Okay, so the twenty-three that you all came up is close, but may not be true depending on if we know or don't know.
We refine our methodology.
The Zillow runs out home and then there's at home and uh there's all these sites now. Uh, so. How many of the vacation rentals are with owners on site? Are any LLCs or is there any rental company that owns it? Do the real estate companies, local real estate companies, they manage rentals? So are they managing vacation homes too? And can you ask them and can, will they give you that uh, uh information? I mean, I'd like to see a map where these houses are in our community. And um, do owners get any tax deductions for their vacation rentals? Is there something? Uh, you know, are they contributing fully to the community? Other than those vacation rentals are no longer available to community members to buy perhaps? And then, and so that takes two and a half percent of allegedly to, I'm, I'm, I'm fairly certain there's more, but uh I can't prove it at this point.
If you find them, we will add them to the list.
We don't find them for air.
Big Casa and all of those places.
Well, yeah, there, there's more of them, Zillow, like I said, does it too now. And.
Vacation rentals?
Mm-hmm.
Zillow?
Yes, Zillow is in the home buying and vacation rentals business. And so, uh, I mean, there's a lot of questions about uh all of this and, and uh. Like, like say, are they owned by uh individuals or are they owned by uh corporations? The Seattle just put out their, the number of their houses that are vacation or rentals. And it's like a tremendous amount of, of housing stock that's not on the market. Uh, for, uh, for them, so uh, yeah, there's a lot of concern about vacation rentals, I think.
I think there is, Mary, but you know, again, we're just trying to start this conversation, reach the community. I mean, I, we recognize we don't have those answers.
No.
Uh, but unless we can get something out and start bringing folks forward to, you know, to talk to us about them, how we want to handle this particular issue. And I think we want to get ahead of it rather than respond after it's already, uh, you know, a big problem. So, um, yeah, I think the questions you're asking are the same questions that we have on the table. Yeah, no, I want you to know that, yeah, we, we share those, those, those questions with.
Well, one, one of my main concerns is. We have a lack of city staff to be able to deal with this. This is a part-time job in and of itself. So how, how is the city gonna handle that? Especially getting it cleaned up.
The purpose here of reducing the administrative burden uh would be built into the different tools.
Okay.
Uh, as we, as we develop.
As we go forward.
And for example, um, many communities have a percentage cap. Which implies that you're going to be monitoring the number of housing units that you have in your community and altering the uh cap when it's there. Um, I don't believe that uh burdening the staff here with a duty of ensuring we have a justifiable number that we uh put a percentage on.
Mm-hmm.
Instead, having a numeric cap listed in these tools, say um forty, twenty-five, forty, fifty something. And then you can change that or that can be changed over time, but not creating administrative duty related.
Of keeping on the percentage.
Leaving that inside legislators do.
Right, and, and doing away with, there was a pretty extensive set of inspection requirements.
Yes. Um, is that truly required for state?
City requires.
City requires, okay. And then my other question is, what are we doing about finding homes that are not?
That's an enforcement one, um, so that's, it ties into uh the administrative burden. But I'm trying to separate out um the questions of how uh the, the city's administrative staff has implemented it before. Versus the what the program should.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
That's always a problem, I think, as we look at land use issues is how many non-conforming or unauthorized or unpermitted uses are out there.
So what does partially licensed mean?
They went through the state.
Means they paid a fee, but they didn't submit some of the required documentation, basically.
To the state or to the city?
To the city.
It's a two-part process and many don't know they have to go through two parts. Or they're told that they don't have to go through two parts or.
But I think this is a pretty reasonable framework that's been laid out here. Ben, do we want to talk about what next steps are? I mean, it's unfortunate that we don't have either Donnie or, or Charlie here. This sort of strategize in terms of what our next steps are and I think they did a nice job working with you to do this. Um, and I think it's. Time long, but. You know, we know what we wanted to do with the next steps, we want to broaden that public conversation.
So their recommendation was to um broaden it by um having one interim check-in with the city council. Um, to see if they want to accept or alter any of, any of the spring ergas, those policy rationals. The list of tools, the suite of tools that we would consider. Um, before putting uh policy rationale, public purposes to, to be achieved to the city council. You could alter those, you could reduce those. Um, you could take some of the tools out of the toolbox uh before, but just not getting out too far ahead of where the city council might end up. Was the concern I expressed there.
So these are the recommendations on page twenty-four.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah. Yeah. But so what, what do you envision the, the? Obviously, you, you're still looking to have a conversation on the planning commission level to sort of flesh, further flesh this out, right? Are we gonna do that by trying to broaden the public input on this?
Yes, um, so immediate next step would be that um. Review by the city council to see if they agree with it.
With this.
With.
Where we are today?
Yeah, with, with.
Page twenty-four.
These two, these two, the. Public purposes to achieve and that's a list of tools. And if they agree to that, that's where um staff would start putting together um the regulatory text. To put out to the community for um, for their review. That's how that system is envisioned, but that can be altered.
Well, I just wondered if something like this would be useful in starting a public conversation, hey, what do you think of this? I mean, this, this is pretty tangible, uh, you know, I'm not sure that. You know, I, you know, while we could use, you know, the matrix here in this. I think the nut, the sort of the nuts and bolts of this are what, what, or what are gonna, you know, evoke some public participation comment.
So which one of you is gonna go to city council and present this?
Well, I, I go to.
Yeah, you go to city.
I go to city council meetings, but I'm just. I wonder if we're, i- i- if there's a step in here before we go to city council that we get additional sort of public feedback.
The world is your oyster.
Well. It, it goes back to a lesson I learned very painfully in my early career. When I would come with something that was sort of half-baked to. The Admiral and he will look at this and he says. Is this completely did staff work? Actually, he said it in a much more brutal way. And I. I don't want to get out ahead of the, of the city council. But I'd like to give them a, 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 I think, a, a better picture of what. What the temperature is out there with the public.
That's a good point. That's a very good point.
Well, as, as a member of the public, I can pretty well tell you the city council doesn't know what they're gonna do next either. Uh, they, they probably don't know what directions to give to you. And, and uh, I think this is as close as we've gotten to this issue of at least having uh something for them to look at. Uh, the committee made some recommendations. Is that what the city, I, I would ask the city council, is this what they want us to look at? Uh, to delve into further, to have public participation and, and see where we, where we are. And uh, uh, perhaps to do uh. More records checking, uh, and that probably means finding money somewhere uh to have somebody actually do an in-depth drive in to actually. See, do we have twenty-three, do we have twenty-seven or how many are? Because people's perception is that we don't have enough housing here. I mean, my landlord passed, I'm in the process of trying to buy the house, but you know, things are so damn expensive here. And when you start looking around, it's really hard uh, uh, to find any livable space in our community. And, and there's empty houses, we have two on Jefferson, why aren't they occupied? I know they're not being used as Airbnb, so Mark, Mark's house and Kim's old house. Uh, and are there other houses in our community that are, that could be used for housing? Yeah, I don't know, but I, 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 I do think, you know, you've, you've done well up to this point coming up with some recommendations. Uh, and the city council should also have some input into where do you want us to go with this?
I don't, I don't disagree, Mary, but I, I think one of the things we wanted to put together was something that we could. That would draw out some public input, something for them to respond to. I mean, these are concepts, I don't think we would, we would submit this to them. For the city council and say it's a recommendation for an ordinance, uh, you know, that's not, that's not what we intended. We, we talked about that in terms of having something that would generate some public interest. When they saw something down here saying, oh, this is what they're proposing, well, I either like this or I don't and here's how I would change it or. Et cetera, so. I'm just, I'm just trying to think of timing, Ben, in terms of, you know, I don't want to get out in, in front of the. Of the city council, but I want to give the city council. Enough focus and clarity in terms of what we're hearing. Before we put an ordinance together that they go through a public hearing them.
The issue was referred to you. Um, and so I don't, um, I don't see any problem with coming up with something more complete um before sending it back to them for review.
And doing some sort of a, get some public input on it.
What would that entail? To get the public input?
Um. Giving enough uh information related to what the different tools mean. Without it being overwhelming of ordinance speak. Uh, and then some sort of um. Uh. Engagement effort, uh, that could be uh online survey, that we found the last time uh with this issue. That online survey left out a very concerned segment of the population. That's the segment of the population that wasn't savvy to do online surveys and um wasn't, was concerned about the new tech possibilities of the sharing economy. And, and Airbnb was capitalized beyond, so we inadvertently excluded some of the people who were most concerned about the issue. Um, so uh, broadening that to ensure that there are other uh ways to provide the same level of comment.
Yeah, I think bringing something with a little meat to it. For the city council to, to look over. Certainly has its, its benefits because otherwise you're kind of just leaving it up for them for a discussion. Of course, they're active in the best interests of, of the citizens. But if you've got some feedback from the citizens already saying, here's what we've heard. And this is our ideas of how to address this. Then you're giving them, you know, a, a much uh easier. Package to deal with than just kind of like. Casting a.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're. They have multiple things that they need to consider and. When we give them something that should be as. Precise as, as capitalized as it can be.
And it really focuses what the issues are and what the options are.
And, and what? We've heard feedback from, from the residents being like, hey, this is, this is something that. We've heard as a concern and this is our recommendation on how to address it. How do you, how do you feel about it?
So the stakeholders, I, I'm listening to, I hear stakeholders that we actively engaged uh the last round. Were anyone who had held a vacation rental license. Uh, anyone who lived adjacent to somebody to a location had been a vacation rental. And just the public at large. Is there a different subset that we left out of that one that we should focus on more this time as we have? Or is that the subset of? Or is that the subset of the population that we're concerned about?
I'd like to find a more effective way of reaching out to the broader public rather than just those folks that are living next to a. Vacation rental or operating a vacation, that seems too narrow, I might.
Well, when our, when the house was appraised. I have the appraisal, and. The one thing that the appraiser said, well, this would be just a really great house to make money off of. I'm, I'm living in the house, thank you very much, I like the roof over my head. But this was his take on it, that would be a good investment property for somebody who wanted to make money from it. And the kids also had a realtor come in, a real estate agent, and not an appraiser. And he said, oh, this would make a great Airbnb. And that, I'm going, I live here, excuse me. Your real estate agents also need to be included in there because they're selling our community to the outside world. And this is what they're telling people to entice them to buy it, so. You know, are they part of the problem? Or are they going to be part of the solution? And because if they're telling people, oh, this is a great place to invest. And that you'll pretty, you know, you'll have people with money coming in here and buying up homes for four hundred, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars. So I think the whole community needs to be involved in this. Those who are living here and those who are trying to sell stuff here too. I mean, both of those realtors really pissed me off. Because, you know, people need homes.
Next steps.
Community engagement.
Community engagement. We just have to define what that means.
Ben, community engagement.
So again, the engagement we did was direct mailers to former license holders and their neighbors. Broad messaging via Facebook, city website. For the public at large, hearing. Some desire to. Engage particularly at large in a different way.
Well, I think there's a shortcoming that we've kind of seen is that, you know, it's, it's easy for the people who previously had license, of course. You know, they're going to be interested in, in what the comments are. The people that live next door to them, which are already have an opinion about it. But really, what we're trying to address is those people that haven't thought about it. And suddenly someone's moving in next door or buying the property next door. And they're like, hey, this is, this isn't. What I bought my house for. And they may not have even thought of that, and so that's, I think. I'm not sure how to. Get those people.
By the public who brought this concern, like you, this is a different. Project because the public brought this concern to. City Council and Planning Commission, City Council, so is that, is that group well represented? You can use the opinions of those two women to. Make judgments on, broader judgments about others, how others would feel, or is there still a gap there?
I think there's still a gap in my mind, I mean, they may be, you know, they're, they made a great case. I ran a map, they raised some really, I think, thought-provoking, you know, observations. But I, I would be reluctant to say that they reflect the broader community. They may.
We, we don't know.
We don't know.
Well, and just to, for instance, we have a house connected to our property. Who had an eight, had a VRBO site. City did not know anything about it. It's sold, but when it sold, another building went up to where I called the city and said, what's going on over there? Because now it's concerned, and it was advertised as. A vacation rental with the home. When the home was for sale, and the city had no idea. So would you be missing me in that, because I do have a concern, you see what I'm saying? Because you wouldn't know that I was next to. So there's that little aspect also.
Our, our problem is. We don't have a great mechanism to reach that broader public. If we use Facebook, yeah, we're gonna get some subset.
You need a car with a little horn on the top. Participation for the comprehensive plan in twenty thirteen. There were always, every meeting had very good attendance. And the commu- wide community, a wide. Portion of every segment of the community was well presented, represented, I thought. But we had a public participation policy, and I don't know how we got there, and this was in twenty thirteen. When we don't have as much, didn't have as much Facebook or anything else in our community. So how did we get there in twenty thirteen, and how can we get there in twenty twenty-five?
We've got a fairly robust. Policy on the, on the planning commission.
Push back a little bit, Mary, the comprehensive plan is a big discussion about many different things, and this is a niche discussion. It's an important discussion, but it's still niche, and it's less likely to generate the interest. That a cop plan should generate.
You could do a workshop of some kind, but to word out.
But I'd like it to be in a timely manner, rather than a kick the can, you know, and six hundred, now we're still going, should we send it to the council? Yeah.
No, I don't.
Yeah.
Before you leave.
Well. That's your show we have, I think what we, I think we've made it clear, we want to reach out to a broader public and get, and get input on.
Just send flyers home with the kids, that's cool, and say, hey. My teacher said to give this to you.
Put a past due notice on it.
But, so. Maybe we defer that.
The other thing for you all, I don't want you to discount your function as a public engagement tool. The city council has already broadened up the decision-making to five other individuals of the community to help assist them. You are, you are public engagement here. We will never reach everybody on every issue, that's understand.
No, we won't, but I think we can certainly get some broader participation in our feedback, certainly, even if it's not. A warm body sitting in a room, you know. But let's, let's think about how we do that, let's do that sort of deliberately, I don't think we're. We're gonna do that strategy here tonight, I just, I think we know what we want to try and do, let's give it some thought in terms of how we're gonna do that.
Is the committee meeting again anytime, the subcommittee meeting any, again anytime soon?
Not for all the books.
Charlie's out of town for a few weeks.
So we could. Appoint a separate ad hoc subcommittee.
Well, I mean, I mean, you know, I think Tony did a nice job in terms of the input that he provided at the meeting we had the other day, I think he should stay engaged.
He's gonna be out of town too.
Well, then maybe we need to.
I'm out of town for two and a half weeks.
Maybe August and I need to sit down with Ben and think about.
Yeah, I just don't want it to get dropped till the next planning.
I, I don't either, I, I would like to see us try and do something in the next week or so to. Hammer out a strategy and, and move it ahead. It's.
If it's the next week, I, I will be in town.
Well, we could have a conversation next week. I think I better go to Olympia on one day.
Only two, yeah. Unless we schedule a special meeting, which you can.
Mr. Mania, how are we having the same issues?
They're looking at their program too, as many communities are.
Maybe these were not the answer.
Next Wednesday through Friday, I am wide open.
Me too.
Sounds like you guys are.
Did he just walk away?
Okay, hey, I was gonna hold it if, if nobody else was, but.
Well, I may be busy all of a sudden. You were the original. Interest person, so if you're.
I wasn't the original.
Well, I mean, that, number three on the committee now is number four after.
I, I hold no, like. Interest in, in. Making it. One way or the other. In the end, it comes out in an acceptable way.
Always a branch, man.
Can you, can you be part of the meeting so you can guide us on what would be the best way? Okay, so you just set up any of those three dates I'm. Perfectly, so you guys set it and just let me know.
Okay, Ben, what else do we have on the agenda?
Moving on to just thought of the month, there is a new phrase out there, the abundance movement. So the specific link I have for you is from Smart Growth America and how they've embraced the abundance movement and want to help influence that. There are good links in there too, that, one of those links is to Realtor.com, which is the Realtor. Description of the abundance movement or the need for that, so. Interesting one there. Giving you just update of some projects downtown, so if you've driven around downtown, there, the streets are blacker. There, behind Walking Man, alongside of Walking Man, and so. Railroad, Street, Seymour Street, and Ash Alley. Ash Alley included paving the parking lot for Walnut Park there for the to go to, so. A little bit more pleasant public parking, and then Polk Works Director Cody Rosanders is working with. Stakeholders on Middle Russell Avenue about restriping that area, so it's currently two parallel parking lines. Lanes to downhill travel lanes and looking at reconfiguring that to be. One diagonal lane, one travel lane. And one. Parallel parking, so. I don't know where they've landed on this specific one, but that would also increase the inventory of spaces available in Middle Russell. Adding three to four spaces.
The hotel is a parking issue.
Are they gonna be clever and do the diagonal on the right-hand side? So that you have the back end to it, and then you can see the traffic when you leave?
That has not been something that was looked upon favorably.
Because you know, if you turn that around, it just makes it more awkward and difficult.
Leave the preferred configuration was. Moves in diagonal on the downhill on the left, left-hand side. And so those. People are more able to see the right-hand turners from Highway fourteen, they're less likely to stop. There was a lot of traffic. Movements into my mind, they're reaching out to the stakeholders along the street, I don't know what their broader public. Engagement strategy is, but I know that they're reaching out to their stakeholders.
And already tell you what the reactions could be.
And Ben, at some point, we're gonna do these. Land Division code updates.
Yes, I removed that from the agenda tonight, I thought that it was ready to go, but there was a whole section that I hadn't done for you, so instead of. Instead of muddying.
And I can tell you that my solar panels are doing wonderfully.
Oh, good.
Well, if not. The day before yesterday, they probably weren't doing so hot.
And it's been interesting, of course, this is sort of the optimum period. Two to three times our consumption they are. So that all goes back to net meter.
Or do a microgrid for your neighbors.
You know, we all go back to the, you know, to net metering, so it all goes. You get that, it runs your meter backwards, basically.
Very cool. Very cool.
All right, is your motion adjourned?
I'll motion adjourn.
Well, thank you. We have a second motion, and I think everybody's in favor.
I'll wait to hear from y'all.
To the P U D that they've gone for the solar business for their revenue stream, but they looked at me.
They didn't appreciate that take.
Well, gee, you know, people are gonna go off the grid, what are they gonna do for money? It's coming.
Oh, the regulations will be here soon.
They'll just raise the rates on the rest of it.
Daddy government is coming, don't you just, don't you worry about anything.
All right, thank you, guys.
Whole fire power plant down on the Terrier grounds.
That go over really well.
Yeah, that would go over.
Yeah, that go over really, really well. Is there any movement on the Rock Creek place since the city council meeting? Are they waiting till next year?
Since the city council meeting, we've got a caller too from. Construction contractors for the developer, so I don't. Don't know, but.
We're getting, getting to that cold weather.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ben.
Cool beans, see y'all next week, I'll wait to hear from you.
Sure.